Also, did you get a chance to listen? Did you guys enjoy it? Were you happy with the product? Did you feel like we contributed something? I want to make sure that it helped.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had some good comments from the strike captains on it. A few of them listened to it, I'm pretty sure.
They feel properly represented? Everybody felt like the points were covered? Okay, good. That's the point. I didn't want to just put it out there to put it out there. It's like, I want to make sure that we actually did a good job to help, especially for people outside. Actually, my, my mom, because of that episode when she came down to visit, Hayden got to meet her. I brought her down to the strike because she was like, I want to go to the strike. I said, well, come on down. That's what I said. She goes, I heard your podcast. We can just go and show up. And I was like, yes, come on. So I took her to the strike with her new boyfriend and they walked with me with signs. They loved it. They met, they made so many friends. They just talked to everyone.
Oh, that's so great. Yeah.
That's brilliant.
People were nice. They were like, yeah, this is what we're here for.
The Writers Guild of America is officially back to work as of 12:01 this morning.
That's right. Union leaders approved of a three-year deal yesterday, ending what's been five months of strikes. The writers are allowed to return to work despite the ongoing ratification process. The deal reportedly includes pay raises, streaming-related bonuses, and growing protections from artificial intelligence.
So there's a whole host of things that the writers managed to win in this deal. And some of the highlights include minimum staffing sizes, which means there's supposed to be a certain number of TV writers in a room on a given show. Something called success-based residuals, which means that in addition to streaming residuals, if a show is a huge hit on a streaming service, writers will see a bonus based on viewership there, as well as some data transparency. And, and of course, AI protections, which is notable because that's something that these studios, according to the Guild, didn't initially want to engage the writers on, but ultimately came around and offered a series of different protections for writers, given this, you know, emerging technology.
As far as I'm aware, we can picket with you guys. Okay, okay. We can't hold anything that says WGA on strike, which is like some of the shirts we have and some of the signs, if people have hung on to them.
I've seen the newer ones where it says WGA stands.
Yeah. And so it's like, that's not just like a cute turn of phrase. It's like, oh no, there's, there are labor law reasons why you have to say one and not the other.
It's like one of the reasons why I want new shirts for SAG that like, don't say strike. Cause you can't wear the strike ones that we have now to, if we were supporting the nurses, if we were supporting the UAW, if we're supporting anybody.
Uh, I have that classic black one. It just says SAG-AFTRA strong.
Yep. You can wear that everywhere.
You can wear that everywhere. Yeah.
Negotiations between SAG-AFTRA and AMPTP have officially been suspended as of Wednesday night. The Alliance of Motion Picture and Television Producers declared that they have halted talks with the union, given that the gap between the parties is too great. Negotiations between the AMPTP and SAG-AFTRA have been suspended after SAG-AFTRA presented its most recent proposal on October 11th. After meaningful conversations, it is clear that the gap between the AMPTP and SAG-AFTRA is too great, and conversations are no longer moving us in a productive direction. However, SAG-AFTRA shot back at the AMPTP, telling members that the studios walked away from talks with the union and accused them of using bullying tactics and misrepresenting to the press by overstating the costs of the proposal. They have done the same with AI, claiming to protect performer consent, but continuing to demand consent on the first day of employment for use of a performer's digital replica for an entire cinematic universe or any franchise project. The SAG-AFTRA message added, "The companies are using the same failed strategy they tried to inflict on the WGA, putting out misleading information in an attempt to fool our members into abandoning our solidarity and putting pressure on our negotiators." But just like the writers, our members are smarter than that and will not be fooled. The development came after the fifth day of negotiations between the union and studios and streamers since SAG-AFTRA initially went on strike on July 14th.
Well, that we, that we saw in the WGA strike with the auto workers, I think all over is just what the playbook looks like for every negotiation. And when you hear, no, you'll never get that, you can never get that, we'll never give that to you. It's just not true. And again, I, I just cannot believe that they're using all the same lines on SAG right now that they used on the WGA literally a month ago.
It's like a dude in the bar who's like, hey, hits on the one chick, uses a line, gets turned down. Friend, like two feet next to her, hey, have you heard this same line?
Two seconds ago.
Hey.
No, because they're, they're saying again, oh, it won't happen till January. We won't, we won't negotiate with you till January if you don't cave now. And yeah, they said that four weeks ago.
They were like, bro, we've been, we've been writing on January since July. Like, that's not a fucking threat.
Yeah.
Who are we to challenge them in any way? We should be so lucky to get whatever they want because they're the bosses. And I keep pointing out to them that that kind of business practice is unsustainable nowadays. They had given us a proposal package. We worked for like 36 hours on it. We brought it back to them. We walked them through it. And they left and then called a few hours later and said, we're breaking negotiations. So it's not only baffling, but wholly disappointing and counterproductive. I've never really met people that actually don't understand what negotiations mean.
Yeah, it's classic AMPTP tactics is what they're doing. Like they've done it before and like it's, it's in a whole different time. Like we're all linked. Like there's so much more solidarity than there ever has been between the unions and whoever's striking. Like everybody on the line, especially the captains at WB are like, next year, when everything for IATSE comes up, and I think the Teamsters as well, like we are out on the line with them. And I think the WGA is the same. Like everybody's like, we need to get everybody a fair cut and it's just not happening yet. And this is why we're here.
The goal is for this strike to succeed, at least get the majority of what we're asking for, what SAG is asking for, what WGA was asking for, which it does sound like WGA got that for the majority of it.
Yeah.
And that way, when we get into negotiations for our contract for Teamsters, it's to be able to avoid the strikes. And we say, hey, look, this is what we're asking for. It's the fair thing. Let's not go into a strike, but they could easily threaten a strike again and be like, we, we, what? We've been back to work for like three months. You think going on strike is going to hurt us again? No. It's not like, because at this point, we're already fucking broke.
Yeah. Already have the two, three jobs trying to support and selling on eBay and foot pics, God knows what.
It's a crowded market now. It's not easy to get into foot.
It's, yeah, it's flooded. You're right.
Negotiators for the major studios and striking members of SAG-AFTRA have just announced plans to return to the bargaining table on Tuesday. The announcement comes as some of SAG-AFTRA captains hit the picket lines today to mark 100 days of this strike. This week, actor George Clooney leading a proposal to lift the cap on dues set for high earners and adjust how residuals are distributed. Union leaders say that Clooney's idea had good intentions, but it does not address the two main things that SAG-AFTRA members are fighting for. Tuesday's planned bargaining session will be the first since talks broke down last week after a series of meetings between the two sides.
It can take hundreds of people to make our favorite movies and TV shows. And while writers and actors have been on strike this year, the rest of the industry's workers have just been out of work. More than 170,000 workers belong to the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees, or IATSE for short.
You've got this whole technical world out there of people that deal with camera and grip and lighting and sound and goes on and on. They're a bulk of the workers in the industry.
I've been gripping for about five years. A lot of what grips do is kind of provide a structure that the other departments are going to operate on or around or within or use. You're working with steel pipes, steel chains. You are working out in some ranch in Santa Clarita and getting just covered in dirt, you know? It is absolutely blue collar work.
In the past, there's been a lot more noise from the people that I work with about, you know, the actors or the writers or whoever it is. They've just got to settle this thing. We just got to get back to work. There's a lot more solidarity with the actors and writers than there ever was in the past. But it's not a contract for us.
IATSE has not been on strike this year. We're just kind of deeply impacted by it. Many of us have worked to try to show up in solidarity. If they're picketing the show as a union worker, like I don't feel it's okay to cross the picket line, you know? So while we aren't ourselves on strike with all of the productions that have been shut down, there isn't a whole lot of work to be had. It's been a tough year.
I know people who are getting evicted and leaving the business, leaving town. I'm busy generally. I've worked 20 days this year. I'm 60 years old. I've been doing this for 43 years. And this is the first time I really got frightened about money.
When we go back to work, our wages won't be any higher. Our benefits won't be any better. I do still hold on to the idea that the, the better their contracts are in the long run, the better it is for, for all of us.
Now we're in this position where our conditions are not great and we've been out of work for almost a year and our contract's coming up.
A major IATSE contract will expire in July of 2024. There's a chance that this could lead to another strike.
My worry is that we will be so fatigued by having had almost a year off that we won't show up for ourselves. I think that what the producers are hoping is that we've been broken by this strike and that we'll accept whatever terms we get. And that might be the truth.
When it comes to the next round of negotiations with IATSE, I think my biggest hope is that we stay courageous.
And I hope we have the support of the writers and the actors.
Union reps for striking actors say talks with Hollywood Studios will continue today. After breaking off nearly two weeks ago, negotiations resumed yesterday. The Screen Actors Guild strike started in mid-July. One issue is that it appears the sides remain far apart is how much actors should make from shows on streaming platforms. This walkout has lasted 104 days, the longest in the union's history.
Hello, listeners. Welcome back to another special session. This is an update for the SAG strike and what's happening with the WGA and their new deal that just got ratified. I was able to get Leah Folta and Hayden Hebert back on the show to just kind of walk us through what's going on, where we are right now. And all around, just help spread the information and the word of what's going on. So thank you for tuning in and I hope you guys enjoy. Welcome to IPA Sessions. Welcome to IPA Sessions, a podcast for independent artists. I'm your host, Kay Jacob. And today we are continuing on with another special edition of IPA. We're going to be doing an update for the WGA SAG strike, which is now officially just the SAG strike. Because the WGA were able to actually get a deal and we brought back Leah Folta, the WGA strike captain. She's here to talk about what her current situation is, what's going on, and what this deal actually means for everyone. And on the SAG side, I have brought back SAG strike captain Hayden Hebert. Welcome back, everyone. Welcome back, Leah. Welcome back, Hayden. Say hi.
Hey, it's so happy to be here. Sorry, jinx.
You guys owe each other a Coke now.
That's right.
Thank you guys for coming back in. I, I wanted to get together and do this update for everyone because the strike can be, it can be a little confusing. It can kind of sound complicated. There could be multiple sources of information, some which is very good and informative, some which can be misleading. It's worded in a unique way that as someone who's in a union myself with the Teamsters, I get updates from them where they break down everything that's going on and it helps me find my, my news outlets and what's going on with the strike. Leah, the WGA got a deal and it has been nullified as of a week ago or two weeks ago?
Ratified.
I'm sorry, ratified. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe a few weeks ago now. Um, yeah, sorry. Time, time has no meaning and hasn't for a long time now. This whole year has just been a black hole of like, we're in this other place now doing this thing I, I never realized I would be doing. But also when you look at the history of the industry, well, at least for the WGA, it's like, oh, this, this was due basically as going on strike and it won't be the last one of my career, I assume. Just because they seem to come every like 15 years or so.
Right. It's, it seems to be a pattern. Hopefully not as long and hardcore as this one was.
I know. Yeah.
Absolutely necessary.
Yeah, yeah. It's like, we're willing to obviously, but we almost got to beat the record for the longest strike in WGA history, but we were short by like six days.
Hey, you know what? Let's take a victory. I'll call it a win.
Yeah.
We want a super long. I don't think we want to be breaking these kind of records.
We don't, but after getting that close, everybody was like, come on, at least let it be historic.
You know, while I have you here, I want to focus on the WGA first because I want to break down for a lot of people. I have friends, family back home. Even some people inside the industry that when the WGA got the deal, everyone assumed, or the majority of people assumed like, oh, the strike's over. There's a deal. And it's like, well, no, we still have SAG. Hi Hayden, we see you back there. We still have SAG. They still have their strike. They still have their negotiations to go through, but let's focus on WGA right now. Can you elaborate for us this deal, what it means, what the benefits are? What are you happy with? And what is something maybe you're a little cautious about, but you're optimistic?
So I want to, I'll start with like what the deal is, what we got. And all of your questions about the deal itself, but also I want to make sure I come back to how, how everybody is doing now. At least as far as, you know, me and the people I know of and stuff, because it is, it is a weird time where everybody I think was, or a lot of people were hoping to get back to work quicker than it looks like we will be able to. As far as the deal we got, everybody is very happy with it. It was ratified. I don't know, with only like a couple percent of voting members, uh, voting against the deal we got.
Yeah, I heard it was a very high approval vote.
Yeah, yeah. And even, you know, those tend to be high, I believe. But, um, but yeah, this wasn't especially high one because, because we held out for so long, because the solidarity among ourselves and between us and the other unions was just so high. Like it's not normally like this, which is so weird. And it was so difficult when apparently it's like the easiest version of a strike is when everybody agrees and is on your side. It just is still miserable to get through. But, um, but so since we held on together for so long and really the, the other side was trying really hard, mainly through stuff in the trades to like find ways to splinter us and get people to break off and disagree and just couldn't. And so the deal we ended up with was one where we got gains for every faction of our membership, arguably. Like I think there are some people who would disagree with that, but as far as how you can usually expect to be disappointed, we, we got crazy gains throughout.
And that's good because I know that's one of the major issues that your union was actually trying to get.
Which one? Making sure everybody was taken care of.
All like all departments of writing was taken care of. Like, cause you have writers for shows, you have writers for reality. It's different versions.
We actually, yeah, yeah. We don't have reality writers. I think we should. But yeah, yeah. They are not in our union currently, even though what they do is, yeah, writing stories. But, uh, we've left feature writers behind for a long time and we got some important gains there.
Which is good because a lot of features are streaming now too. So that was a big deal.
Yes. Yeah. Overall, it was trying to correct the way that huge companies, you know, the biggest companies are getting a huge discount on media that writers are creating for them for streaming that they can, they can pay us like it's still quote unquote, new media, when that's the way I think half of people watch TV now. So yeah, made a lot of gains for features, made gains for comedy variety writers who were really, there was a spotlight for a while on the way that the companies wanted to, to offer them daily minimums when we've been doing weekly for, I believe all TV writers, just not feature writers for a long time. I'm just trying to roll back stuff we even have already had, you know? A huge win we got is really restructuring the way TV writing is protected by the MBA. We got minimum room sizes. Um, and there were compromises in there because it's a negotiation. And I'm a lower level writer, so some of the compromises make me nervous.
I heard about that. Yeah.
Yeah, but, um, but as, uh, I don't know, in our, our big meeting where they explained the deal to us and answered questions, they explained why they thought we are still protected and the gains that are still a really big deal for everybody, including lower level writers. And that basically we did our best to write a good deal and argue for a good deal and have our lawyers put the good deal in fine print. And over the next three years, we still have to look at enforcement and what loopholes the companies find.
Yeah. Once, once you actually get the practice into effect, you can start seeing like, okay, I see how they're trying to loophole this now.
Yeah, yeah.
Come back to negotiating table in three years.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. So it's every three years, no matter what. So even if it's like, damn it, they found a loophole where they are exploiting people, then that's something we will take care of.
Which they will do. Don't be surprised.
Yeah, it's their job. It's their job to pay us as little as they can. But for what we were hoping for and what we designed and what we've been fighting for, yeah, it was, it was a great deal.
So you feel satisfied for now with what you guys were able to achieve?
Definitely satisfied for now. Definitely eager to get back to work. Near the end of our strike, we had a meeting with our leadership and, um, I believe it was our vice president, Michelle Mulrooney, who said, what they've gathered from the membership is that solidarity is high, but morale is low. And I think that's kind of how I feel at least about the industry as a whole as well, where it's like, yeah, we still, like I'm not hoping SAG caves to get back to work because it, it just really is, the solidarity is so high because what we're all facing is such an existential threat. And especially with things like, I'm thinking specifically about AI, where not only are you facing like what they might do with the technology in the future, the ways that you're already being screwed and your jobs are being eliminated right now. So it's like, I don't know, it sucks. It sucks for everyone, but you gotta, you're holding on because you have to. And Jacob, I think, I can't remember if this is before we started recording, but when you said that the Teamsters were like also on the same page with SAG where it's like.
Off air, yes. By union, uh, they send out weekly and sometimes bi-weekly, uh, notices and emails updating us on what's happening with the strikes. Uh, yeah. Sorry to cut you off.
No, no. Yeah, perfect. Cause I think that's an incredible win just for the communication being done by your leadership is like, what a good job to have you so educated on the issues facing, you know, the different unions.
No, I love that feeling too. Um, I actually, what I really enjoyed was when, and Hayden, I promise we'll get to you shortly. I'm just trying to keep it in this order. But when SAG had their negotiations with the AMPTP and the AMPT, they completely just walked away. And you know, we also made a joke off the air earlier that they're literally doing to SAG right now, what they just did to the WGA less than a month ago, the same exact mirror, mirror image dealings. It's insane. And our union was so frustrated with that, that we, they sent out an email. They put everybody in the loop. They told us exactly what's going on, what's happening. They expressed their frustrations and what we can do to keep that solidarity strong, to help bring up morality. And so together, the Teamsters and IATSE had a solidarity rally with SAG at Warner Brothers, Paramount and Disney for like a whole week, like just going out there. It was like a solidarity week, just going out there. And it felt so good to go. I went out on a Wednesday and it was awesome to be there, see a lot of familiar faces. Uh, and just to show SAG like, hey, we know you're not the problem because what you're asking for is reasonable. And honestly, you guys could ask for more. And the AMPT just doing what they're doing is frustrating and it's unnecessary. Like you stated earlier, it's old tactics. It's, that doesn't need to be handled this way anymore. And I'm sorry for that detour, but you know, you're speaking of solidarity. Um, what is the WGA's position now with the strikes? Like, how do you guys show solidarity?
Yeah, we're encouraged to keep picketing because we know SAG members were out there picketing with us from the very beginning of our strike until you guys were officially out on the line as well. And so with whatever we've got left in us, I'm trying to, trying to stay out there too. And I actually, I don't know if, uh, if this is relevant or not, because I, I think I'm in a little bit of an unusual situation where, um, I got a day job that came my way where it's like not.
Congratulations on that. We know on the last show, you expressed the, the, the stress of having to go and find a job outside of what you want to actually do. And I'm so happy for you and I'm so inspired that like, hey, all right, cool. She's got work. She's getting back out there.
Thank you. Um, yeah, everybody I know who's working WGA jobs, it was jobs that were in progress. Before, before we went on strike and they just like picked back up, but nothing else. Um, maybe like one thing. I don't know.
But hey, at least you're writing. So this is not a WGA writing job, but it is a writing job. And I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah, yeah. For a foreign company that does podcasts, um, and it just, I had been doing part-time work during this, uh, during our strike. And then it was, just came time where it's like, I gotta look for full-time work. Um, but so I, when I was like, oh guys, like I gotta leave the picket line. It's my last day. That turned out to be everybody in the WGA's official last day. So, um, I, yeah, have not been able to get out there with, um, SAG because it's a nine to five. And I, I don't know, I feel really guilty and feel really like out of the loop. It's weird to see pictures now and like wonder, like I hope I would be out there supporting and I hope everybody who can like gets out to the lines, but also I just feel like everybody all around has been so, and even your reaction to my getting a job, everybody's so understanding about like, do what you need to, to take care of your life and come out as much as you can. But like, yeah, life, life happens and you gotta, yeah, take care of yourself. And I think that attitude as an organization is so good, um, just as far as keeping people out there. I'm curious, uh, when we finally get to Hayden, I'm sorry, um, to, to hear how you feel, because I heard that, that the lines were like, well, I heard WGA friends be like, hey, SAG's lines are looking kind of thin. Like get out there when you can. And I was just wondering if that is the experience. Um, cause I'm sorry, and that sucks and it's so hard. Um, but everybody's behind you. Everybody's just really tired and you're really tired overall. Like, yeah, morale is low.
I think that's a great segue into Hayden for an update from SAG's point of view. And you're right about being tired, Leah. You're absolutely right. I mean, SAG just hit 100 days and I don't want to go applaud you for that because it's not records we want to be breaking. It's not. Uh, but Hayden, what's the deal, man? What's the update on your end?
Well, uh, today is 108. Tomorrow will be 109. And, uh, so we're officially out of the FM radio numbers.
That's right. We hit the triple digits. Again, not, not happy, not proud of that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, uh, like as was stated before, it's kind of morale is down, but solidarity is as, as good as it always has been. There's a lot of things going on. Uh, AMPTP has the trades and they're sowing division like they have always done. And, uh, there's a few other things behind the scenes that like, like just hearsay and talk and whatnot that you hear. And you're like, well, until I hear it from SAG, that's not official, basically. And, and that's, yeah. And that's the, that's the, the basis for all communication with and dealing with these corporations that just want to screw us over, basically.
I'm glad that you said that. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm really glad that you said that. And for anyone out there listening, if you really want to know what the actual official deal is, you can look up what SAG releases, because what they're releasing is the direct, like this is exactly what's going on. This is where we are. Uh, and they release that information publicly after they release it to their union members. Uh, because I'm with the Teamsters and we, and our emails from our union, like I want to say within a few short hours, they'll go, so SAG just released this to their union members and they'll send us the documents. And, and, and you can also find it on, um, social media outlets as well.
Absolutely. And, and truth be told, it's not much because our negotiating committee is adhering to, uh, negotiating practices that you're supposed to, which is.
Keyword, supposed to.
Yeah, yeah. Like the AMPTP releases all these statements and all this, you know, bullshit, basically. And, uh, I, I talked to our negotiating committee. They don't tell me anything. They are, they just rally us and tell us that they're behind us. And like, I see them on the lines with us. They come, if, if the meeting's at 11:30, I see like three of them beforehand.
Yeah.
And then they go to the meeting type of.
We had, uh, we had Brian Cruz on here last time, one of the SAG members. He was talking about, you know, he has this webcast series that he does, and he has a bit now where he gets his dog Pepe to go out to the strike lines and, uh, kind of do these little fun interviews. It's really funny. It's really hysterical, but they actually run into not just strike captains, but they have run into the negotiators. And even there, the negotiators, they talk about as much as they can without really getting into specifics that they can't speak on yet. So I think that's really cool that they're out there saying like, hey, not only are we at the negotiating table, but when we're not at the table, we're out here with you guys. I think that's great.
Yeah. On the captain's appreciation day, we had like about a week ago, I saw so many of the negotiating committee. Cause I think they actually had that day off or it was like right before they ramped up to negotiations again. So everybody just came out to the lines and it has been really nice and it. has been really nice. And it does come in waves, like what Leah was interested in. Yeah, we've had some very good numbers on days. And then we've had some down numbers at WB. And that's where I basically always am at, because I'm still riding my bicycle and that's five miles one way. So I've just been biking it there and back.
Gonna be in great shape when you go back to work.
Yeah, pretty much, pretty much. I mean, I am keeping the crafty that is supplied to us online. Like we get, we do get some like pizza, we get coffee every now and then some. It's kind of funny because some days you get like, there's nothing there except for like some donuts people brought, which is great. And then some days there's like three trucks and you're like, where did all these trucks show up? Like, whoa, who's all sponsoring these? And there's still showrunners from the WGA that are sponsoring trucks for us and all kinds of things. We got water from Jaden Smith, I believe.
Wow.
We've gotten water from Jason Momoa. We've got like, we've gotten so many things. One of the major ones is Our Flag Means Strike. And they supplied like all of the food, like all of the crafty type of little bags and cookies and whatnot. I had no idea that that was them for the longest time, but they, they do that at strikes. I guess they're a nationwide thing. And I was just like, holy cow. Yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant, that's not the Our Flag Means Death fans who like donate stuff? Is it a separate organization? Cause they, they would donate a lot of stuff to us.
Oh, I, maybe it's the same thing. I just don't know the specifics. It's Our Flag Means Strike. And like, we just keep on getting boxes and everybody credits them.
That's so cool though. So once again, solidarity everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we see IATSE come out in force and WGA, we get equity members, we get the nurses' union comes out, the musicians come out post-production, even though they're not a union, they're, they're coming out in force as well. And but there have been some like, like I'm at WB and we have quite a, a good turnout. We have shade, we have space for those trucks, we have space for pictures.
The walking route's nicer.
The walking route is nicer. Yeah. And there's video of like four or six picketers at Paramount one day outside Lemon Grove parking lot. They're all just in a circle, just going around because there's nobody showing up at some of the, the other studios, like Paramount's really hurting. The ones in Culver City I've heard are, are having issues with turnout. It's just so many people don't live in that area and it's hard to get there if you don't.
Especially when your worker's out of work.
Yeah. And if you're, if we're working, then you're, get that money, like all of us in the industry. It's like the mantra of like, oh, you need a different job, like get that money. Well, you can't, like, if it's film related, or if it's not film related, like, everybody's like, we understand you have to take care, like it's the oxygen theory that we're all working with on the line of like, you have to put the mask on yourself before you can put the mask on others. You have to help yourself before you can help others.
Yeah. I had to find a job, which I was thankful I was able to find something kind of like Leah, I found something related to like, I'm a locations guy and I was able to find a job delivering. So I'm able to still go to multiple different neighborhoods and scout locations and get great ideas that I can't get paid to, to help with production with just yet. But you know, it's nice having that job because it's now I'm like, all right, I have my security and what I need to, to pay for my family. And when I have the time off, or if I take a day because I gotta go pick my kid up early from school, I'll take the day off and I'll go down to the strike when I can. And I have seen those days where, you know, it can be kind of like, I went to the Disney one recently and it was very, very small, but it was still at least maybe 75 to a hundred people. So that was still nice to see. And then I've been on days like when we had the giant solidarity unions come together at WB and it was massive. So many people, at least, at least a thousand or less. But like, just like around that number, it had to be, because it was so crowded. It was nice to see that.
Yeah. For, for the thin days too, it's like two people at a studio gate is technically a picket line. So
Still counts.
Yeah, you just need that.
Yeah. And, yeah, we had a day recently that was like, we had 800. That was one of our counts. And we rarely get counts at the end of the day, but that was a, a big day, like within the last week. And then our day 100 fell on a Saturday. So it wasn't an official picket, but a bunch of us at WB just went back out to WB for like a couple hours.
That's awesome.
And picketed them on the Saturday of the 100th day. And we just really stayed in that two, three intersection going back and forth. And some people made some bagels and it was a great solidarity. Like we just felt so good for the community to, to be out. And like, it was just mentioned the day before, like maybe there's a few of us showing up. And I think we had around a hundred people show up to it. And it was just like an unofficial, like everybody out.
A hundred people for a hundred days. Good enough, man.
Yeah, at least.
You know, I appreciate you guys giving me the update with the strike line and what's happening, how the WGA, you know, they kind of stand there off to the side, helping with the pickets, contributing what they can. They just, I know there's some legal wording, so certain signs have to be changed. I know that they can no longer say on strike. But you do see things like there's SAG strong, you see things where it's like WGA stands with SAG.
Yep.
And it's good to see that, that even though through these negotiations, they're trying to find ways to make you guys not strike and picket, and you're still finding ways to be like, well, you find loopholes, here's our loopholes. And I, I love seeing that fight. I love seeing it. And you know, we, we discussed that the WGA finally got their deal and it took, what was it? 160? Something, 73 days, something like that?
148, I believe.
I way overshot that. Sorry. 140, it just felt like 160. So it was like 148 days. And you know, we're at 108 now for SAG. I don't want to see 40 more days of this. I want to see this knocked out this week. As of this recording right now, we've come together on a weekend for everyone's availability. This particular weekend, SAG went into negotiations again on Friday and we have not heard an update. Hayden is our union guy. You haven't received any information. Do you see this as potentially a good sign? Especially because, you know, just a few weeks ago, the AMPTP walked away from the negotiating table.
Yeah.
So how do you feel about knowing that? Like you haven't heard anything yet? That's gotta be good, right? Or at least hopeful?
Yeah, this is the first night that we haven't gotten a, kind of a quick update from the negotiating committee, Saturday night. They gave us one on Friday. And yeah, maybe they said that they weren't negotiating on Saturday, but I don't think so. But
Yeah, I heard through the weekend.
Yeah, I think they're just negotiating through the weekend. And I think that's why we haven't heard. And I think it's a very like optimistic, I'm hopeful, I'm ready to be out there for a whole lot longer if they walk away again from us, because that is something that they may do. But I am, I, I really want to get back to work. Like it's, I've been unlucky to not have found a, like a, a job. I've been putting some resumes in and whatnot. I did happen to get to go back to unemployment for a little bit, but we'll see how that goes. They're having me do a, a meeting tomorrow and do a whole bunch of paperwork I've never had to do before. So, you know, let's see how that goes. But yeah, it's been just kind of crazy at 108 days now. And yeah, I think that they're just nose to the grindstone and they just don't have time. And there's a lot of things that they, there's so many, like you guys have already mentioned loopholes that, you know, once we saw what WGA had negotiated, I was in a solidarity, like Discord, or is it through Discord? I think it's a Zoom thing that everybody's invited to. But ever, anybody can join. It's not even SAG, I think. But like, we had negotiating committee coming in at the end and they started asking questions because it was like an old WGA president and it was like somebody who had, I'm not sure if he was on the, the negotiating committee for the WGA, or if he was just upper echelon. But they started asking questions because they, this was a few weeks ago, it was right when, it was before ratification for you guys. And they were like, there's just so many loopholes, so many flanks that we have to get, because there's so many ways they can word one thing to say, oh, we're gonna make it for streaming. And then you get this amount of money. And then they've made it for streaming, but they push it to their platform that's not considered streaming, but could, like, it's just this like-
If they can be tricky and sneaky, they will.
Yeah. And, and if they can make money off of anybody, they will. And there's so many factions to try and think about because like, our, our background have been forgotten for contracts for years. And
It's a disgrace. It really is.
And there are thousands, tens of thousands of our members who do that. There's, there's a stigma towards it. And I wish that that would go away because it would be nice to have more numbers on set so that people who are, we have ups and downs of our career. And some people who get lines multiple times and multiple shows a year, don't make SAG pension and health. But if they could just dip into background or stand in work, if there wasn't a stigma and we had numbers to help it, like you could get your SAG pension days and whatnot. Like it's, it's, so that's a big fight that I, I hope we get gains for them.
That kind of goes back to what Leah was saying. For so long, so many things have been overlooked and have been done in a mishandled kind of way. You see that so many people are forgotten, Hayden, both in the WGA and SAG, you see it everywhere. And with these strikes that are happening and these negotiations that we're trying to get, it's not just beneficial for WGA and SAG, but for everyone inside the industry. And something that we mentioned earlier, I believe Leah brought it up, and you even brought it up, about the, the nurses and the, you know, United Auto Workers, the city, the city employers, like, or city employees, like everybody who is, you know, a part of these working unions are trying to just get a better deal. You know, we mentioned off the air that like, we shouldn't have to be struggling to grind months on end to make our bills and our payments. I have a family. I have a girlfriend. I have my son. I have my cousin that lives with me. We support each other. We pay bills together. But yet, it's hard for us to take just a weekend off to go and have dinner together outside of cooking at the house, to go and watch a movie or go to a baseball game or anything that's an activity that we can spend our financial gains on, because we don't have that. And I'm so happy to see that everyone across the board, not just in this industry, but outside of the industry, is fighting to get better pay, to get what they are appro, should be appropriately compensated. So I'm, I'm really rooting for this. I know that it's, you know, morale's going down, but it is so awesome to see that solidarity across the board, inside and outside of the industry. And I just want to ask you, do you feel, Hayden, this is for you, do you feel that the SAG negotiators are doing a good job? Do you feel that they really are representing you guys and have your best interests at heart?
I really do. After meeting so many of them and talking with them out on the WB strike line and probably Disney a few times too. But I, I really do feel like they're trying to get the best contract for as possible, as many people as possible as well. Like, they know how much we're struggling and how hard it is to be a working class actor, and how few there are of the top, top earners in Hollywood. And they're not, like, the top, top earners are negotiating their millions and billions of dollars per movie. They're not doing SAG negotiated contract work. Like, so that's been an interesting issue. But I, I just urge everybody to come out. We, we don't need to see you for hours and hours at a time out on the line. Like come out for an hour for three days a week. If you can, come out for like one day a week for three hours. Come out. It's, it'll, you'll feel better for it. Like, it's the sense of support and community. It's uplifting.
You'll get to see friends too, that you haven't seen in a while.
Yeah, it's a bunch of artists.
Who you run into. Yeah.
Yeah. It's a bunch of artists out. It's, 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 it's a, it's a crazy crowd. We're fun. And we're, we're depressed and we have gallows humor and we love each other. And it's just a, a crazy group of people who all found out that we want better for our future and the future for so many other people that come after us.
Right. Well, and I'm, I'm hoping that by the time this episode that we're recording airs, that we will know how the negotiations that's happening right now over the weekend have turned out. Hopefully it's 110 days, SAG gets a deal. I'm, I'm rooting for you. I'm rooting for you. Yeah. But I just want to thank you both for coming back on. Thank you for helping me do another, you know, strike special, an update for everyone. Cause I really do want people out there to understand what's going on and to know that like, yes, WGA got a deal. It's been ratified. It's in play now. But we are still on strike. The productions are still down. People are still out of work. And as we've stated, we're out there doing our best at what we can. Come down to the strikes. Support us. Show that solidarity. Is there anything that either one of you would like to add before we wrap this up?
Um, I just want to add that, especially since you said you have a lot of listeners who aren't in the entertainment industry, just how, how common certain union busting tactics and lines are, how it looks the same throughout every industry, once you know what to look for. But so if you ever hear, if you're in a union and are in a negotiation and you ever hear that your leadership is unreasonable and you can't trust them, that is an incredibly common
Major.
Yeah, yeah. So it's like-
Major union busting.
Yeah. Like you shouldn't be asking for what you're asking for, is what they're saying, basically. And like, you should basically an appeal to the membership to like, try to go around the leadership.
That snooty, be grateful for what you have.
Yes.
That's so aggravating.
Yeah. And the other big one that I'm thinking of is just a lot of things that fall under strikes don't work. Like, we don't need you. We, you know, when Zaslav was like, we're saving so much money not doing business this year, you know, not making things this year.
Yeah. How's that working right now, by the way?
And how will it, you know, there's going to be repercussions for this year throughout next year and beyond. So it's like, yeah, all of those things are union busting tactics, strike busting tactics. And it's psychological warfare. That's what you're in. And that's why it's so hard. But yeah, you can do it. They do need you. Get involved in your union before you go on strike. So you can double check that you trust them and everything's reasonable. Because then, I don't know, when you're on strike, it's like, that's your team. You gotta stick with them. Stick through the strike. Just stay strong.
Right.
Yeah.
And I just want to extend an invitation out there. For anyone that's listening to this, that's not a part of the film and TV industry, but let's say you're an auto worker, you're a nurse, you understand your union, you understand what's happening with the strikes. If you want to come on to IPA and talk about it, I'm here for it. We are a place for indie artists. But I, I like doing this special because I want to see fair compensation for everyone. Because indie artists, we, we're independent. We do this stuff because we love it. But we also want to achieve that goal of making it financially as well. And so I want the same for everyone else out there. Even if you're not an artist, hit me up, reach out at ipasessionspodcast@gmail.com. Give me a shout out. Let's get together. Let's talk about it. Bring some friends along and let's help get word out there because solidarity is strong all across the board. And thank you so much for that, Leah. Hayden, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, not, not too much really. There's not too much to add. It, it is going on for a lot longer than a lot of people prepared for. And it is getting harder and harder for a lot more than just people who are in the film industry directly.
This is affecting restaurants. It's, it's affecting local businesses. It's insane. In the state of California for sure, in Los Angeles area, I've seen that. It's wild.
I just wondered where the food that usually goes to catering for all the productions, where does the farmer sell all that food while this is going on? Like, there's therapists who are like, yeah, I have tons of openings because some people have lost their insurance and, you know, like during this time. And, and things are getting a little bit more heated because I've been doing the strike captaining, oh, since probably about a week after the, the SAG went on strike. I'd attended a few of the strikes before then, but we, we get a lot of, a lot more flipping of the birds, people running red lights. There's been a lot more antagonistic drivers coming in and out of the, because there's work now going on, on the lots to build and whatnot and what have you. We've had people almost get hit several times. And thankfully, we haven't had anybody get hit yet.
Yeah, thankfully.
But we've had agitators showing up with all of the world madness that's going on. There's a real concern for everybody's safety. And it's, it is wearing on everybody on the line, but just, it, it's, it's a-
It's a broken record. Just keep doing it. Keep showing up.
Yeah, just keep on showing up. Like, we haven't had anything that's like beyond crazy yet. But we've had some angry workers and people who are just slightly attached to the film industry who are pissed off, come to try and talk to us. And, and they, they're, they leave reasonable typically, unless they're coming in an unreasonable state. But it's, uh, it's been a, it's been a wild ride the last probably two, three weeks.
I'm so sorry.
And, and I feel like the reason you have a rise of these agitators is because a lot of people, like I said earlier, the reason why we're doing this is they're misinformed. And they're like, hey, this is over. Why are you still out here? Get out of my way now. Like, I'm not honking at you for support. I'm honking at you to get out of my way. And that's the thing. And, you know, I went to a Disney protest and I saw my first agitator. And it was so interesting because it was, uh, it was people dressed up like Disney princess- And it was so interesting because it was, uh, it was people dressed up like Disney princesses. And they were across the other side from the strike. And I thought they were with the strike for a minute. And then someone said, oh no, they're, uh, they're actually, they're representing Disney. They're, they're there to protest against the, the SAG strike. And I was like, what? It's like, yeah, it's a thing. And they, they dress up like Disney princes and princesses. It's, it's a weird thing. I was like, so Cinderella's pissed at SAG right now? Is that happening?
Yeah. Who the hell is that? That's so weird.
I had never, I thought they were with the strike, like just dressing up. Cause you know, it's, it's October. I was like, it's Halloween, right? And it's like, no, they're not with us.
SAG has a Cinderella who's been there for a long time.
Yeah. Cause I've, I've met a lot of Agfa people coming out to support us too. They're the, they're the fuzzy and face workers for like Universal and Disney. And they're in a union. So these are fans, these are fans of Disney so much so that they don't, they're anti, that's crazy.
Yeah. They love Disney so much that they're against you guys. It's weird. It's a weird thing. It's like, I feel like if they just took a minute to talk to them.
Yeah. We have people that are not in the union, who are not even in the industry who come out and they're just like fans for the support SAG. Like it's, yeah, the people come out.
And we know so many of those people not in the industry, they get it because so many people have worked in and out of this industry and have left for so many awful reasons, which we are fighting for. To get better compensation, to keep these people around, to keep talent around. That is to keep it what it should be, the, the fun art that it is. So it's, it's wild. It's a wild thing.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just want to thank you both again. I appreciate this update. For the listeners out there, stick around. Uh, very soon we will have Leah back on the show to talk about her writing, to talk about her journey as an independent artist and how she made it into the union. So a success story in my book, and I can't wait to have you on for that. And she's going to bring on her writing partner. They are a tag team duo. They're just super awesome. I can't wait to have this conversation and air it. It's either going to be before this, uh, season ends or by next season. Either way, I expect when I have you back on that we're talking good news and that we are in production and we're up and running. That's what I want. Hayden will also be on to talk about his journey as an actor. I can't wait to have you here. And again, I don't want to see the both of you again until production is up and running.
Yeah. Deal.
Deal.
I'm down for that.
See, it's not that hard, AMPTP. See how you make a deal? It's so easy.
It's so easy.
Thank you again, guys. To the listeners out there, I hope that you found this, uh, session to be informative. I hope that there's a little bit more clarity now that everyone understands what the WGA deal is. And that SAG is still on strike. Productions are still down. People are still out there wanting to work. Thank you for tuning in everyone. And until the next time, stay golden. Thanks for listening. Please be sure to rate and review and click that subscribe button for new bi-weekly episodes. As always, the theme music is provided by The Erica Page. Follow us on social media, @IPASessionsPodcast. We're on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and now we have a TikTok and YouTube. All information and links are in the show notes. So show some love and support for these amazing indie artists. And if you'd like to come on and share your journey as an independent artist, reach out to me via email at ipasessionspodcast@gmail.com. Till next time, I hope you found some inspirations for practical application and entertainment.